All right, we're good to go.
Okay, here we go. Hi, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Tropical Planning Commission for Wednesday, September 22, 2021. If we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Wittrin.
President.
Commissioner Waddila.
Yeah.
Commissioner Momone. Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
There.
Chairman Stafferson.
Here.
Okay, this time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance and Commissioner Wittrin. We're gonna mute here. Commissioner Prickett.
Yes. Oh, sorry. I have an airplane going on.
Okay.
Chair, it looks like Mr. Momone did join us.
Yes.
Good evening, my apologies.
Good.
My sister was a little bit slow, didn't want to start.
Okay. Uh, next thing, is there anyone who wishes to to the public, to the planning commission this evening on a non agenda item? Alex, did you receive anyone?
No.
Wishing to make public comment, okay. With that, we will go into minutes for first, 11th, 2021. Uh, with Commissioner Wilcox.
Okay, Chair Stephenson. Think I got skipped over on roll call, by the way, I didn't hear my name. Get right into it. Usually don't worry about the attendees for the meeting, but I did notice a couple of names that I recognized from the list that appear to be misspelled. See, the third from the bottom, Dana DiNucci. There's a Christian counselor by their name, which I assume is the same person, should be DI capital NUCCI. And midway on the, up the list, there's a Kelsey DiNucci Morgan. I suspect they're probably related and it should be spelled the same DE or DI rather, DI capital NUCCI. Yes. Page three. Way down, we have a paragraph that starts, Mr. Dambgen. Uh, says Mr. Dambgen explained that this type of development has been zoned for the property for quite some time. Unlike what often happens when multifamily development is proposed. Not sure what was meant by that. I know there, I know there've been other A2 properties that have gone undeveloped for many, many years.
Maybe what I meant to say, that might have been just an incorrect way of stating it, but my intent was to say the last one basically that came through, which was the Eagle Ridge one, which was in staff's estimation a comparator property. So commit, if the commission is willing to amend it to what was intended, that's what the intention was.
Okay, Eagle Ridge also required rezoning.
Right, that's what we're saying.
Right, and where Eagle Ridge required rezoning and a map amendment. This one was
Straightforward.
Yeah, zone for that use, I think is what you were trying to say.
Right, yeah, it was, that's, so if I was, that's, that's basically what I was trying to relay, was that the last time it was before it was a heightened. The last time, I should say, we had a controversial multifamily residential situation and it required a rezoning too.
Okay. In the very next paragraph, second sentence reads, explain that while it shows four floors because of the sloppy nature of the property, in some cases it would be three floors. Think that could be explained a little bit better, since the four floors are, you know, because of the the daylight basement. It just doesn't seem, seem to read very clearly to me distinguishing between the four floors and the three floors.
So you think because it's a daylight basement, it'd be three floors from gray?
Wouldn't describe it as daylight basement that way. But the, the renderings basically showed the possibility of even within the same building, four floors on the downslope and three floors on the upslope.
Right.
From a, if it helps, a lot of times that's referred to as three and a half story. If it's not a completed floor on, on one half, particularly if it's subterranean. That's how the building code would interpret it as a three and a half story structure.
Okay.
That's fine.
Moving on to page five. And a few marks on this one. First per sentence, staff compared this property to the recently constructed Eagle Ridge Apartments at Terry Park Road and 242nd Drive and Hogan. 242nd Drive and Hogan are actually the same street by two different names, so maybe that should be 242nd Drive slash Hogan.
Yep.
And very last sentence in that same paragraph. I'll just read the, the last line, 200, 2.37 spaces per unit, which slightly exceeded the typical parking or typical parking standard. Not sure why the word typical is being used there.
Alright.
I just, I just delete that entire word. Okay, in the very next paragraph. About six lines down. Staff offices, we're talking about Eagle Ridge Apartments again, staff offices are just a few minutes away from the property. But it just says from the property, it's not specifying Eagle Ridge Apartments anywhere in that entire paragraph that I can see. Think the next line or two. It starts with 9:00 PM. And the sentence about halfway across the starts. There were also used reserved spaces for residents and for compact cars. Think that should be unused spaces, unused reserved spaces.
What was that again? Can you repeat the location, Mr. Wilcox?
Paragraph that starts with Mr. Dambgen, the line that starts with 9:00 PM.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Further down the same paragraph. Fifth line up, starts parking requirements. Parking requirement threshold, and then these go unused, no one wants to park in a small space and they can park in a larger space. That's, that's kind of stated as fact when it's more opinion, and someone might park in a compact space if it's closer to their doorstep, for example. Okay, then skip, skip a paragraph and the next one that starts with Mr. Dambgen. Fifth line down, starts with the word income. Income and homeownership opportunities even for people making 100% of market income. I think that should have been median income possibly. It's all for that page. Page six. Third paragraph down starts with staff, three lines up from the bottom. The line that starts be opportunities. And then the the sentence that starts, they received an Arbor study. Should read Arborist study. And the next paragraph after that has a heading of approval criteria, Mr. Dambgen explained the approval criteria processed before presenting them. I think that should be approval criteria procedure. Hey, keeping up? Okay, moving on to page eight. Paragraph starts with Mr. Dambgen. Five lines from the bottom. They would need to shift the edge of pavement up to a standard. Because they do not, because they do not need a 25-foot aisle. I was thinking there a better word for up, or should say down rather than up, because you're reducing the width of the driveway, driveway. Okay, on page nine. Let's see. We can address this later, but I have questions about the allowance for the 14 on-street parking spaces. And applying those toward the meeting the standard. There were some, seemed to be, it was explained that the they're allowed to be used to meet the standard, but then they weren't allowed when the, as part of the variance application, which didn't make sense to me. Okay, page 11. Third full paragraph down that starts with Chair Stephenson. Chair Stephenson said that to explain more. Also about the square footage of the stalls going from 15 to 11.10 inches. I assume that's, should be, should read square feet, maybe. Got that one? Page 13. Very top line, this matches closely with staff's observation about parking at a weeknight at the nearby property in Gresham. I assume they're talking about Eagle Ridge again, I don't know why it says Gresham.
Can, can you repeat the, the, the location, the Sorry, I was, I was catching up on the last edit, I didn't catch the whole edit, page 13 at the top, page 13, okay.
Yeah. 13, page 13, the second line from the top, reads Gresham. Rather than
I think he's, I, he's referring to their company's project in Gresham, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, got that. Okay, page 14. Third paragraph from the top, starts with Chair Stephenson. Second line reads, there will probably be a cedar fence of Black Chain Lake, of should be, or uh, next paragraph that starts Mr. Wilcox, third line down. He noticed on the plan that some of the engineists were less steep than the others, steep should be deep, DEP. And then few lines down in the same paragraph. There's an opportunity for storage in the front ones. And the ones on the end are about, I don't know what they mean by front ones. Maybe end ones. Or I guess that, they talk about the end ones later, being 24 feet. So maybe the front ones refer to the ones that aren't on the end. Okay, same paragraph, four lines from the bottom. Garage for car charge units or electrical cars, I think should be electric cars. Okay, page 19. The paragraph toward the bottom that starts Ms. Prickett. Let's see, it says apartments, Halsey Street Apartments residents park on the street, so they evidently don't have enough parking because they're parking on the streets and in the fields where this project is being developed. So were they were they actually parking on private property where they weren't supposed to be?
I think they're pocket, parking off to the side of the apartments on a, on grass itself, it could be the, it is private property, but I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. Okay, page 20. First paragraph. Third line down. Talking about widening the road of the property owner on the north side. I think it should probably read widen the road with the property owner on the north side. Talking about Halsey there. And allowing for a left turn lane to be created, going westbound. Okay, about three quarters of the way down. Paragraphs, short paragraph, starts, Mr. Waddila asked what additional information is required, Chair Stephenson answered that the parking on the adjacent east facility could be of value. I don't know what's being, what that's talking about.
Ever see off-street park, on-street parking?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
The on-street parking.
Okay, that, that makes sense, I just kind of came out of the blue there, one little paragraph. Close, yep, that's it, that's it for that one.
Does anyone else have any corrections for meeting minutes of August 11? Okay, I have one little one. On page 14, second paragraph from the bottom, Chair Stephenson said that some of his apartment communities, can we just say some of the, his being the applicant?
Okay, you don't own apartment communities?
I know.
Okay.
You didn't want to exit and stone?
Sure. Chair, make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from August 11th as amended.
I second it.
Can we have a motion of second to approve the meeting minutes of August 11, 2021 as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, moving on to August 25th. Uh, Mr. Wilcox, please.
Okay, I don't think there are near as many in this. Uh, starting with page three. The top paragraph that starts Mr. Dambgen. Third line from the bottom starts with the word standard. Standard to allowing a 1.97 standard is not going to cause irreputable harm? Should be irreparable, irreparable harm.
Could you repeat the location of that for me one more time, please? Page three, full paragraph.
The third line from the bottom.
Okay, page five. Second paragraph from the bottom. Two or three lines up. Mr. Wittrin said that he thinks that's some full parking needed to be in there. I think I think the terminology we've been using is compact and standard, so full should probably be the standard. Uh, page six. Second paragraph that starts with Mr. Wittrin. Third line from the top, smaller, smaller garages were singles, but there were still goods. They were still good sized, and Mr. Wittrin remembers it being explained well to them. I think Mr. Momone, when he was seeing the extra deep garages, were thinking they were like tandem garages, so that specifying this. It's the, you know, all the garages were, were singles, there weren't any. There were, there were tandem, so I don't know how you want to reword that one.
Yeah, there, there were singles, and there are singles with storage, basically. The, the gist of it.
Different sizes of garage. I don't know.
Yeah. Difference is good, deriving, but well, there was size ones with extra storage.
Plenty of room for a smart car, fair golf course.
Looks like that's all I have for that one.
That's all I have, okay, anyone else have any corrections to the minutes of August 25th?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, a couple of correction here.
By no way. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, page four, first paragraph. Uh, said Mr. Momone said wish, and he said to remove himself from, and I would remove to remove himself from and add disregard the variance itself to understand what is happening, and I would add, after happening, I would add to the totality of the development, so erase, remove himself from and substitute with disregard. And then at the end of the paragraph itself, or the sentence itself, to the totality of the development. Then the third paragraph always on page four, second line says more relevant issue, which is whether this is a good idea, I would remove idea and substitute idea with design. And in the middle of that same third paragraph says these, the language says this would create an open space, children's space barbecue area, which is I would add this would, and I would add not what, sorry, the lights just go, yeah. Not be achieved. These will not be achieved by creating an open space barbecue area which is locked in by rows of automobiles, otherwise it looks like I was saying exactly the opposite. That it was a good idea to have an open space locked on all four sides by, by rows of parking spaces. So these would and add not be achieved by creating, change it create to creating, and then leave the sentence as it is.
Which is not.
Correct. The third line before the last of the same paragraph. Says if things, the litmus test is if the community development director or if any of the rest I would change the rest with if any of the planning commissioners would then want to leave there.
Were you talking about staff?
I was talking about that the litmus test would be I was talking about that the litmus test will be if the director or anyone of my colleagues commissioner. Would be willing to live there instead of say the rest, the rest is confusing. If the community director or if any of the rest of them. Uh, it means very nothing is this too. So I would change the rest. If any of the rest, if any of the planning commissioner. I would add that language. I remove the rest. Any of the rest.
That's not really our charge. To determine if we would want to live there.
I mean, this is basically what was commentary. That's not necessarily qualitative. But that I believe.
But yeah, again, since it is, so we're right, but this is where correcting it. Uh, well, before it wasn't commentary, before it was, it was putting on my, in my mouth words that exactly the opposite of what I tried to say. Because by before the sentence before we correct was that I was saying it's a good idea to have an open space, but it's surrounded by parking lots. And parking spaces, which is exactly the opposite. So, um.
That's.
Um, page five. The last, the last sentence before you turn the page, he has heard, he has, I would say he has seen is a format again, but. Still to understand what we are talking about. He has seen about four different type of garage. So instead of he has heard. Page six, last paragraph. Miss Brickett said that she agree with Mr. Mamon about considering a livable. The apartment community would be, I would remove community and had the apartment complex or the apartment development would be. And then on page seven, the last one, on second paragraph, the third line says. Also with screening, there is extensive buffering from the western, which is exactly the opposite. So. I would remove also with screening and start that there is extensive with a capital T. And remove extensive because I don't think there is extensive. I say there seems to be sufficient buffering from the western edge. To the single family residential, but I would like to see a clearer landscaping plan, such a rendering of it. So. The third line should be remove also with screening crossing over. And then that there is extensive, put a capital T in there, remove extensive. There seems to be sufficient and then the sentence keep going. Buffering, there seems to be sufficient buffering from the western edge to the single family residential, but you would like to see a clearer landscaping plan. Such a rendering of it. And then we're okay.
Okay, anyone else have any corrections? I just have one. Uh, page three. Paragraph, Mr. Wilcox commented that he did request staff for you. I thought that was Morgan Meadows. Not mountain Meadows?
It's mountain Meadows.
It is mountain.
That's the apartment complex.
Okay.
They're all Meadows over there.
All right.
Chair, I move we accept the meeting minutes for August 25th, 2021, as amended.
I second.
Motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of August 25th, 2021, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those passed. Great.
Mr. Stephenson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Wil.
Uh, I skipped over one in the previous minutes. I was wondering if we could go back to that.
Oh. The 11?
Yeah. Need a motion to reconsider. How's that work?
Yeah, you would have to just make a motion to reconsider, have the majority of the planning commission agree to it, and then you can dive right back into it.
Okay, that's a pretty, pretty serious mistake, so. Trying to get it corrected.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we reconsider. The minutes for August 11.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to reconsider minutes of August 11, 2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. We're back open.
Okay, thank you. Page fourteen on the August 11th minutes. The paragraph that starts, Mr. Wilcox, about halfway down. It reads, a tenant could have two cars in the garage and be taking up three other total spaces. What I was trying to convey is that it's talking about the whole idea of parking garages being used as storage rather than parking. So I obviously didn't intend for two cars to be in the, in the garage unless, as Chair Stephenson suggested, they're smart cars. But the point, point I was making is someone could have two cars. And, uh, and a storage garage and be taking up. Three of the available parking spaces in the, in the development.
I don't think the storage garages were parking spaces where there's just the auto garages.
The auto garages were.
Yeah, so it was the auto garages. So if you had. Two auto garages, yes, that would be two spaces. The, I don't think the storage ones were counted as auto spaces.
Quickly, well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, okay, the auto, if someone were to choose to use an auto garage for storage. And they had two cars parked in surface spaces. They would, they would be used, they would essentially be using up three spaces.
That's correct. Sure. That's correct.
Okay, that's the only additional change I have.
All right, so what do we change?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the min- minutes of, uh. August 11th as amended again.
Alex, did you get that amended?
What is, what exactly is he?
I think Commissioner Wilcox is trying to say a tenant could have two cars in parking spaces. None in the garage. Taking up a total of three spaces.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's probably the cleanest way to say it. Thank you for clarifying that.
Is that correct? Is that correct, Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, that sounds good.
Thank you for editing.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, reinstated that we, uh. Accept the minute of August 11th, 2021, Planning Commission, as newly amended.
I second that.
Okay, reverse order this time. We have a motion by Commissioner Brickett, second by Commissioner Wittrin. To approve the minutes of August 11th, 2021, as amended. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, go carry and we are on to the really big show. Uh, tonight's agenda item, sign code text amendments is the first one. And, um. I think everyone received a copy of the existing sign code. And what staff is looking for. And, um. Just to be clear that when we do these things, um, development code amendments are our responsibility. Uh, we are responsible for what is in there and a text amendment can come from. Um, staff, the planning commission, the council, or another citizen group. And we are always the first ones to review it. We're the ones that work with the code the most. And so this is part of our job and it's something that we do. It's usually quite painful. And monotonous, but, um, we do get to do it. And no, we don't take it lightly. Okay, and with that, I guess I will roll right over to you, Mr. Dan.
Okay, well, um, the, this was the appetizer on tonight's menu. You still have the main course ahead of you. So we, we wanted to keep it relatively brief tonight, but we, we, we know that we have talked about it intermittently for the past year and a half. About updating the sign standards. Uh, one of the reasons why we're looking at that is we're trying to provide some greater clarity on some definitions that we have. We also believe we can streamline the process and make it more citizen friendly or applicant friendly to get through the process. Particularly with our new permitting system that we have where we can effectively do concurrent review, which a lot of signs often will require. Uh, not just the, the design of the sign which this code regulates, but also if it requires a building permit or an electrical permit. And we now have the ability to clean that up, but added to do that more efficiently. But in order for us to do that more efficiently, we would have to make some, some structural changes to the code. And while we're, while we're in the code, we also wanted to address a couple of other issues that had also come up. Which this, this commission has actually faced before. So. Uh, just wanted to quickly go over this one page memo and highlight what those discussions were previously. This is kind of the consolidation of the previous two times we've talked about it and we want to prepare you for a. Text amendment where you'll have a red line version of the current code as well as what the clean new code would look like, but this summarizes it neatly in a. In a memo. Uh, so we would have some changes to definitions. Uh, we would ref- refine the definition for flags to make it distinctive. From banners and we'll get into why we're doing that here in just a moment. Uh, we would establish a definition for inflatable signs. Uh, you know, what, when does a balloon become an inflatable sign? And how do you prevent certain types of inflatable signs? Uh, establish definition for monument or freestanding sign. And establish definition for real estate signs, which we would consider temporary pole or wall mounted signs. And clarify what types of signs can be considered temporary. We do have a temporary sign definition, uh, but really we're talking about banners. Lawn signs and real estate signs. In elsewhere in the code, in chapter 10, we, uh. Uh, have basically six larger points. The, the first one is more procedural. And have signs be reviewed as a permit and not as a land use application. Right now, they are technically supposed to be reviewed through a land use application in which staff has up to 30 days to make a decision on it. And again, when we're reviewing it, we're only doing it for the design consideration. So you have a design. And then if the sign requires it, then it has to move into a second phase or a building or electrical review. And we're saying we have the tools, we have the technology to do it in all one full swoop. So much like you do for other sections in the code. You have the ability to still have standards governing dimensions and, and placement. But you don't have a land use application for it. Like another example is, uh, home occupations. We, we don't require people to get land use approval to get a home occupation. You just have standards for conducting your business. So we, we maintain our standards. We just decouple it from a more formal review process. It's going to save a lot of time, a lot of headache and a whole lot of staff burden. And applicant burden to, to make that happen. The second one is one you guys have been familiar with because you've seen already two applications in two, the past two years. And that is to allow for freestanding signs to be placed within a front yard setback. We've had this come up again and again, that signs, the way they are currently regulated. Have to respect the building setback. But we've seen instances of where building setback standards have really made the signs too difficult to see. And we've had people say, can we please just get closer to the property line? As long as we're not prohibiting or creating a vision, clear vision situation for cars leaving in and out. Let us have that flexibility, also to make sure that they're not on any active easement or anything of that nature. That's what we would seek to do. Freestanding signs, uh, allow for real estate signs to be exempted from permit requirements. Technically, if you read the code. Real estate signs right now are considered temporary signs and are required to get a permit. I don't, been here six years. I can think of two real estate agents. Out of God knows how many who have contacted our office to secure a signed permit for a real estate sign. Let's just be realistic about this. Let's just govern the size and the duration of it and let's not create more work for ourselves here. Prohibit signs that move, rotate, revolve, flap, flutter, simulate and animation except for flags. This is what we're talking about. These feather type signs that you see, the signs that are hooked up to, um. To basically like a, um, a blower and you know, the big floppy thing, you know, to draw attention. Um, they have caused. Distraction and that is something that I think previous discussion had said, we don't want to see that. Establish dates for how long and how often temporary signs can be placed. Uh, the standard set that you last left off with were, uh, to allow it for up to four times a year. For 30 day durations, but they couldn't be back to back duration type situations, but. It enables, you know, effectively seasonal sales and things of that nature. Um, and it, it just provides that, that framework because right now there's no. Limitation restriction, but there's also no clear end game for how long a temporary sign can actually be up. And in some cases, temporary signs have become permanent signs, which is not what the community had desired. And then the, the last one is just a really small one, but it also again saves staff headache. The, the signs that you would see particularly in downtown, you know, the sandwich board signs often are two foot by three foot type arrangement. If you actually do the math on it, that's six square feet times two for the other board, that's 12 square feet. Yet we have a restriction for 10 square feet. So we're simply asking. Us to round up, allow two square feet just so that these signs, which are technically non-conforming. Can be conforming and we can all just not worry and stress about that. Um, and of course they still have to get an okay from Multnomah County or from us to be placed in the right of way. And usually it does not become a problem unless it's an ADA or accessibility issue. So those are the summary of the expected sign code amendments that we would seek to bring with to you all. Are there any questions for staff? Otherwise, we would be prepared to send this your way very soon.
Questions for staff?
The, uh. The RV store Wood Village has a huge American flag.
Let me take a look real quick before I. Back that. I don't believe we actually, I could be wrong. And I can definitely follow up with you, but I don't believe we actually regulate the actual, actually I take that back.
Considered.
The, uh, flags are exempted from any sort of current permit standards if they are. Less than 24 square feet in size measured border to border. If they're larger. Then they would be. I guess potentially. Regulatable, I guess, or they could be regulated. Um, but again, much like with real estate signs, we've never had a situation where we've had to regulate the size of a flat. Sure. They do light it up at night quite well, though, I'll say that.
Okay, uh, other questions for staff?
When we were, you're talking about prohibiting, um. Moving, rotating, revolving, flapping, flooding, like the feather, are you talking about the feather? Signs that you see on apartment complexes?
Those as well as, um, the ones that are in blowers that have like the, the little man, you know, doing the arm.
I know, yeah, I know, we're just exactly what you mean.
Yeah.
No giant gorilla then?
Well, then we also have the giant lizard on top of the Dairy Queen too at the.
Yeah.
Not picking on any one business, but yeah, I mean, these are.
Just to point out what, what we're looking at, not to say specific.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
One of the things with the real estate signs. That was one of them that got, um, modified by legal. Uh, because with the Gilbert case. Bring court case on signage and. Supreme Court case on signage and content. It was determined for a lot of these. That you had to read the sign to determine what type of sign it was, and you could not regulate a sign after you've read it. I'm not sure how we get to real estate signs. Without reading them and how we regulate them independently. Maybe legal could help us with that.
I will see if we can find a good thread for the needle. Or the a needle for to to thread that because you're right, it gets very close to touching the Gilbert test, as they call it. At the same rate, though, we we do have to be realistic about facts. I mean, we are effectively complaint driven code compliance community. But we also know that real real estate agents typically, and I'm not faulting them, they would not come to our office to secure. Permits for that. And if if that's going to be our expectation. That they do that because they're considered a type of temporary sign. Then I think the expectation has to be that that's just not an enforceable provision for the city.
And that's okay. I'm just trying to figure out how to do it from a code standpoint, because we were told that. That was a problem for us.
We will certainly before we we bring it to you, we'll try to get that. Clarify, and I'm sure there will be differences of opinion depending on who you ask in the legal profession on that.
You're talking about the contents.
Yeah, if you remember, the the issue was that. If you had to read the sign. To figure out what type of sign it was, read any content that was on it. That was not doable. Because you could not regulate a sign based on content.
I I guess the question is, is a real estate sign while effectively. Based on its posting a temporary sign, just based on its limited duration. Do you call it a temporary sign or is it a different sign classification altogether? Because you can't make a distinction. You're right. You can't make a distinction among temporary signs like. You can't technically treat a political sign any different than you do a sales sign.
Right.
But.
And I would.
How you how you define it might might be as important as what? What restriction you may have for it.
And I would say I would think of real estate signs as temporary signs until I see one on a property that's 700 whatever days. And so the the sign's been up for two years.
Right.
And I think our standard is, you know, maybe 90 days.
So if a property is on the market for over a year or two years, then. The real estate agent would have to reapply every so many days.
Well, right now there is no technical. We we have a temporary sign definition, but we don't apply any sort of timeframe to it. That's that's kind of where Gilbert has thrown everything off is like, can you make that distinction? Like. It used to be. There's an election coming up. You can't put put up political signs for a camp preferred candidate until like. Two months before the election, then you have to take it down a week after or two weeks after. That provision still is in the code, but it doesn't say. It doesn't give a like, it basically says a temporary sign should come down after an election or after a sale is completed. And that's basically all it says right now. But. That's fine for a real estate sign too, but unlike. Unlike a say a sales sign, you technically are requiring a permit for it as it stands right now. I don't think you're intending to require a permit for a real estate sign. So.
Unless you guys think those need a permit.
In that case, Alex and I quit because. I don't think we would be we would be issuing real estate signed permits all day, and that's not a good use of your staff's time.
There's Stephenson.
Yes.
So as I've seen through the years, it's temporary signs become larger.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Seems to be some background there that's causing.
That's my wife on another meeting. Sorry. She's. Bringing it down. All right. So the the question is. I've seen through the years as we loosen up our regulations on signs and we increase sizes. Especially signs that don't have a permanent base. Have we considered the effect of wind and location on those types of signs? And how we would monitor that so we don't become large heavy projectiles? You know how our wind gets, especially it's worse in some areas than others.
We do on temporary, right? Permanent.
Temporary, yeah, we wouldn't, but permanent ones, yeah, in some cases would require building permits, particularly if they're fixed to a building. The building code has changed a little bit over the past couple of years that exempts certain signs, but given our local conditions, we still have the right to an inspection. But on temporary banners could be hard, like just yesterday when we was it yesterday? We had pretty heavy winds. I saw some of the banners there at the 257th and the Stark Highway intersection were flapping around pretty. And and. You make a point, counselor, Commissioner Allen, I think that's that's maybe something we can look into for clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Allen?
No, that was it.
All right. Next, Commissioner Will Cox.
I guess. There's a definition under point 31 for sign owner. And I'm wondering how you, there should be something in reference to. Sign owner versus the the person that's. Posting the message. What I'm thinking of in particular is billboards. If a billboard gets defaced, for example, somebody climbs up there and puts graffiti on it. Who do you go after? The person is paying for the sign or the person that owns the sign?
Falls back to the property or is it not?
Depends. I mean, it the the property owner on which the sign is on could be liable, but if it is a structure. That is in violation of the sign standards, it's it's whoever owns the structure responsible for the maintenance of the structure. But I think what we're saying here, the owner of the sign structure, we kept it deliberately vague because it allows. Not just the sign owner, but potentially even the property owner. If the owner, if the property's assets include, say, the billboard in your case. They both become liable in that case or responsible for for fixing the. The problem. It's a good one, though. I don't think we've had that situation come up yet. I I had actually.
It will.
It could. Unfortunately, it's not lost on us. We have had graffiti issues in in our community and it could come up. Does that, Mr. Wilcox, are you suggesting that needs further clarification in the definition? Because that was not one we where we had. Had intended to make a change.
No, I I just wanted to make that point. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Priggett, do you have something? No, all right. Now, were we? Were we allowing feather signs or not?
We were not.
Not. Those are a little unpopular side these things.
Those are what? I'm sorry.
They're fairly popular these days.
They are, but again, it should be noted that we do know there are businesses who have them as well as properties that have them. It's a complaint driven system. We, even with these new standards, unless we were directed otherwise by council. We do not go actively pursuing and collecting signs that are. Improper unless it's a public safety issue or it's posted in the right of way, like. Once a week, our code officer goes and collects a whole bunch of. Company X is now hiring or, you know, garage sale sign this way that are put in the right of way. We could scoop those up, but those are also can can inhibit the traffic and create issues, but. Unless a feather sign or a. Bobbling man or a giant lizard are really creating an issue, we we don't typically go after those signs. But if 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 you think as a commission that, you know, if we're going to be touching this. Section and maybe we we should be a little bit more proactive, then I would I would request that you put in that request with counsel because that's a counsel discretion on how to. Tell staff to to enforce these.
Yeah, no, it's not really. It's not really a deal with dying at this point.
And what's the point of prohibiting them if we're not going to do, I mean. Basically. Means it's just something on the books that says you can't, but if it's not, if you're not going to enforce it, why even have it?
It's a fair question.
I mean, that's mute at that point.
We've had some feather signs occasionally be on the right of way. I think where where it has been problematic unfortunately has been in downtown, and that's not trying to signal out. One business, but in those cases they're creating a hazard. And they're putting it not on private property.
And I I understand that if it was on private property, it'd be best, but on public property, don't you have the right to remove them anyway?
And we do.
So again, I don't, I I just don't understand why we should even put it in there. If we're not, if it's not, I mean, we have, we've taken things out because out of the code because. It was like, what's the point?
We we. The the reason for putting it in the code is we've been challenged as to whether or not those feathers are technically signs or not.
Good point.
They're signs.
There, of course, there's.
There are signs.
Right. So that's why we need the clarified definition and that why. Really say, no, they're not allowed regardless if they're. Where they're located, they are considered assigned.
Okay. I see what enforcement we have. What what is our typical move? We get a complaint, send a letter out?
It depends on the nature of the complaint. Are we talking about for signs now or? If we have a complaint about a sign. The vast majority of it, usually it's a sign that's in the right of way. Which we have the right to pull right away. Usually those signs are advertising something. There's a phone number or website, so our code officer tries to get in touch with said people and says, come grab your sign. We technically have the right to collect a fee.
Charge.
And charge.
Sign.
We do. More often than not, we don't because usually once is a good enough lesson, but we've had a couple of cases recently where they haven't got the message, so. We hang on to them for a 30 day period. Some people don't collect their signs and then they get thrown in the dumpster. But it's with those repeat offenders that, yes, we do have the right to collect.
I'm trying to figure out if I if I break the rules. What's going to happen?
Oh, if if you break the rule and you get a call or an email from from our code officer, the goal, the primary goal is always education before enforcement. So we'll give you your sign back and we would ask you that you.
Right.
Position it in a way that it's within within the code. And if you have an issue with it, take it to the planning commission, or if if you, you know, if you want to skirt by, then do it somewhere else, not not in the city of Tractile.
Can we revoke permits?
Most of the signs wouldn't require permits. They would be those temporary yard signs, which. We don't be, we're not issuing those.
Okay. I know the council's been around the block a lot about sign permits.
What?
The council's gone around the block about sign permits.
Right, but this current council, I don't, I mean, five of the seven members weren't on council when the last time this code was revised, so. Share share the misery.
Okay, and which signs get triggered for land use application?
Well, again, with the new rules, there would not be a land use application associated with it. It would be a permit. But they would be permanent signs. Let me chuck here real quick, sorry. It the the way the the sign code is structured, again, it's basically regulating based on the type of zoning district they're located with freestanding signs. So what I'm referring to here are permanent side permanent freestanding signs, permanent wall signs, signs on a building. In commercial districts, technically awnings do, awnings actually do require. Strangely enough, building permits, but that is because of bracketing and because of. Boring into walls and and as Commissioner Allen mentioned, because of our wind load, awnings are can be problematic in our town if they're not done right. And then certain temporary signs, yes, would require a permit. We also have a standard for freeway signs, which are effectively billboards. That's in on page 10 dash nine of of the code that you received. Projecting signs, which are. Basically, you know, perpendicular 90 degree signs. And then portable signs. So A frame or sandwich board signs.
I'm just used to if it's a permanent sign. On a. Monument, anything like that. Usually that goes through a review.
Well, it's but by taking it out of the land use review. Or taking it out of the land use review consideration, planning, the planning staff still looks at it. But in that case, it's position, it's it, you're, we're looking at the standards that are in place. And a permit is issued and a a sign permitted is is issued, not a land use decision. Is issued, so there's still a review. There's still a end document that allows them to move forward with it. But rather than having to create paperwork that says we have a notice of an application, we have a notice of decision. We have up to 30 days to review your application. We're able to turn around that review. And then again, if it needs a electrical or building permit tied with it, we can review that concurrently. They don't have to jump through the planning group first in order to get to the building. Our 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 computer system, our permitting system now allows for that concurrency, whereas previously. It did not allow for that. So this is a time savings and convenience savings for. Staff and for an applicant, quite frankly. Chair, what's your concern or what are you thinking?
No, I'm just personally, I'm just used to. Like a monument sign having to go in front of a body. You know, whether we present it or staff presents it.
So it's a change, but what are you thinking? There could be some negativity by just going to permit it?
The only negative I would see would be like. You wouldn't have probably as much public feedback. That would probably be the biggest thing. Yeah. You know, you. Might have a better chance of an Ikea sign coming in.
But you you have dimensional standards in place that would probably prohibit that. You're you're not changing the qualitative standards by how you're. In other words, the regulations you have to govern sign, it doesn't regulate content, but it does regulate dimension, placement. Those types of things. I think you're still pretty well guarded in that regard. Because again, we have to, we have to look at those standards when we're doing our review.
No, I'm just thinking more about the poll, you know.
Sure.
Trying to make.
But but much like, much like anything, you know, if if somebody wants a 100 foot tall freeway sign. That's a variance to the standard. It would come before this commission to. To seek out that approval, because at that point, a dimensional standard is being crossed to a degree that. We as a staff can't approve it, but they, because it's in the development code, have a right to. Seek a variance from it.
And that's what I'm just running through my head. I haven't really talked to a lot of people that get people's feelings about her. And that's what I'm just running through my head, I haven't really talked to a lot of people that get people's feelings about everything.
Yeah.
What's it? You guys have anything else?
No, instinctively, that one doesn't bug me.
Which one, the land use one?
Yes. Uh, we could jump down to the bottom, I think that last one's an easy deal on the go from ten square feet, twelve square feet. I don't have an issue with that and it makes sense when you go through by four sign.
Yeah, I think I think that's a pretty easy one.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's gonna I guess, any other commissioners have any issues with that one?
No, I think I think it's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to figure out the the dates for how long you can have a sign up and how you're gonna enforce that.
It will require legal review and by the time you you folks see it again, it'll have gone through at least our attorney's office to see if we're tripping any sort of wire. Because it's one of those things with signs, anytime you mess with a sign code, you have a lot of third parties that start looking at your documents, like the outdoor advertising industry will look, uh, the building codes division will look, I mean, it's there, there'll be people watching. But I think eighty percent of what we're suggesting here as a staff that frankly reflects commentary that you've brought forth.
Oh, yeah.
Are rational, you know, ease of use type changes that that will make a difference in how staff is able to regulate it and how applicants can get through our process in a less convoluted way. I wholeheartedly agree on the private signs that move rotate for all flap flutter because none of that is our small town feel that we want.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a note brainer, but.
Yeah, I I don't think we're getting a lot of uh pushback, right? I think I'm the only one that thinks that um the larger ones not being land use application could get a little scary. Right, is that correct? I'm the only one thinking that?
No, no, you're not, you're you're not cor- correct on that, I don't agree that they should those larger signs should be should still be land use, I think. Because like you said, it is scary.
But with larger signs as it is right now, the way your code is written, there is no all of your sign permits are a type one review, there's no neighbor notification. The exclusive staff review unless there's taking variance. Then it come back here, right? Yeah, so same process except for. Right, if somebody is seeking a a change to a standard that's in the development code, it's it's a variance and it would come before you in this.
There's a land use application, so there would be
Once it comes to planning commission, there has to be notification. Yeah. Because it's a type one. But a type one, as it stands right now, it is a land use application, but there's no notification given. So for instance, with Taco Bell and and BlackRock coming the exit seventeen, you know, right at the, right at that, uh, at the Marine Drive interchange there, they have a sign permit or they'll have sign permit applications right now, if they were in their, if if we were in their current framework, nobody reviews that apart from staff. There's no notification of that on anywhere. But we do have the parameters in the code as far as how big can it be, how much square footage, where it's placed. Those those stay and what we're saying with with these proposed amendments as as you have worked through them, as we're proposing as staff, those standards still remain. So why are we then generating paperwork and why are we stretching out the period of time it takes an applicant to get a sign permit? That's that's kind of where we're seeing the the issue. Is they have to go through our process through through land use approval first before they can even apply for electrical permits. And we're saying is we have the technology, let's do this concurrently, and if they want to go bigger or if they want to change something, come to you all.
But that's typical. Usually your sign permit, then you get the electrical with that.
What we're saying is that the way our permitting software is structured, you can do that review concurrently in the permit itself, the entire sign permit, which would cover the design, the electrical in the building couldn't be issued until the electrical in the building folks are also signed off in addition, of course, to planning. This way, it's a little atypical, yes, but it also makes us distinctive as far as maybe being able to handle these applications and move more in a shorter period of time. Efficiency, sure. But it doesn't change the review requirements, it doesn't change the submittal requirements because they still have to pre- present evidence that they're meeting this height, that they're within this size of the square footage of the sign. You know, they still have to produce documents that allow us to make the review. We're just doing it in one process rather than two. If if there is still, I I would say this, if there's still a concern, if there's still some desire that you want to have a level of neighbor review or neighbor notification on sign, oops, excuse me, then is that just a geographic, we can find area, is that limited to certain zoning districts, like what what would the the concern be?
I would just probably typically want to sign those up very soon if somebody doesn't like it.
But if it meets the standards in the code.
I'm
Why is
Just stating a fact. I'm a little more cautious when people think they're not involved in the process. Even though there may not be a process for them to be involved in.
That's the thing, they're right now, they wouldn't be involved as it is anyway.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Momoni. Having heard all this debate, this conversation, just just a couple of points of um, just to clean up my mind, my I I agree with stuff, um, my experience um has been that always uh a sign has been reviewed with a permit, this I mean, I mean, a administrative review where is no a land use application, it will be extremely time consuming. You know, overly demanding goes on the applicant, and if we think we are potentially, whi- which is not my experience over four different states and and almost thirty years of planning about concern that the community is not involved, we're gonna be much more about slowing down the tempo for review of something that is very simply administratively, when we have clearly established quantitative standard that are very easily to be met, so I I agree with the with with staff that I see a positive sign and switch in the direction. Um, and not simply because there is a a software now allow it, because to me makes make good sense. If the standards are very clear, is an administrative review, if they exceed qualitatively by twenty percent or more is a variance, is a manner variance, is a is a a major variance because in front of review of a of a quasi judicial body, I'm fine with that. The the concern that I have is when we, i- i- if I understood Chris correctly, and Chris, by the way, again, I I agree ninety-nine percent of what you're saying. If if I understood correctly was when we started to define the need for a building, for, I'm sorry, for a sign permit by the topology of the sign, which which is a new narrative to me, uh, the sign usually is not because we're gonna regulate or we're gonna review a a wall sign versus a freestanding sign, there's an A-frame sign, it is, it is, it is a permanent sign or it's not a permanent sign. If either a wall or is overhanging or is it freestanding, it makes no difference, so my concern is that we start now to thread different, 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 very, very thin classification, we play on a sound definition which is countering to the about being a dynamic department like you were suggesting. So I I think we should try to work away from that, also recognizing that not all the signs have to follow within a specific classification, you know, a real estate sign or 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 a political campaign sign. Yes, but if we're talking everyday language, might they might be a temporary sign, but in general they are exempted, no regulated sign, right, so if we are, if we adopting our language, that uh an everyday real estate sign for a short term like open house is exempted, is regulated, that would simplify the matter. Now, it's it's much different, of course, if it is a business sign for a real estate office, then it's a different way, but but I think the conversation should become before we go into try to define every single sign, does it fit in this category or that? The category should be simple, it's permanent, there's no permanent, it's temporary, and then have an understanding what happened in our in our community and say, okay, short term real estate, temporary real estate sign, open house today, open house tomorrow, do we really want to have even a permit for it? Maybe not, I don't know of any community, maybe there are, of course, but I don't have any community that goes to even even by a permit for a for a temporary real estate sign. Obviously, political campaign, there is no need for a permit, let alone to have to have a sign application through a land use application, so maybe if we start to classify that in in larger classification, and then we decide, okay, this sign doesn't even need to have, is exempted, is 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 no regulated, we start to simplify, and I think that if I had to, if I had to make a mistake, I prefer to make an error in simplify the process instead of having the business community be frustrated, because in in my everyday life as a professional, in in the shoes of Chris or when in my holiday, if I had any discomfort, it 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 wasn't because the community was hey, you're keeping us uh everything a secret, you've, it's because the business community was frustrated that the time stretches so long, you know, three weeks, thirty days, uh, whatever, for a land use application for a for a sign. Then traditional dynamic is is completely different, so being short, Chris, I agree with you, I think there is uh in my mind, common sense, good sense, just try to within those larger classification of permanent, temporary, eliminating me as the one that because of everyday life activity, real estate or political, don't even need that kind of classification and are exempt. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll just jump in just because I agree with staff that, hey, we need to permit this and that's the way to go, completely disagree with Commissioner Momoni. I'm more simple and sweet, as I like the details, I like being able to talk about the different types of sign, I think that keeps us our small town feel of what we hope to accomplish and the look we want to accomplish instead of just more generic.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, no, and uh I'm not somebody that tends to try to frustrate the businesses. Um, I've dealt with the sign code personally here and in other places in multiple municipalities, states, so I mean, I I get it. And sometimes it is frustrating, other times I pretty much have a pretty good idea of what they're trying to accomplish as a community. But um you all have to work through. And um I I kind of see where we're, we want to lean as far as it not being a land use action. And uh which ones we want to permit and which ones we don't. I do think it's gonna be hard if we're taking some of the freestanding and monuments and all of those and lumping those together, I think that's gonna be difficult.
I think what's hard, more so what's hard is is some of the other standards that make it more difficult to even review it, meaning like the setback standard particularly is is rather previous. And difficult to overcome for a business because it's like, okay, you want to set it back off the property line. When you're doing that, you're decreasing the legibility of the sign, but you also want the sign not to be this massive massive sign, so it's like, it's a little bit of a balancing act, I I think honestly without getting too philosophical about it, you know, you guys have the sign standard structured the way it is right now. I think what we're trying to do is just utilize the structure that you guys spent a lot of time five years ago trying to put together and just making some surgical edits where we think we can be more effective when we're reviewing it. And where there's less less room for wiggling or debating quite quite applicant's point of view as far as, I'm actually this type of sign and not this. Honestly
That is an issue.
Of of all of all the things, that's probably the one that that um that would affect this body the most, because you've already had two applications already that have very clearly made the point, and while you could see the common sense in it, the way you write your findings stating that it's a unique case, it's not really a unique case. It's just not a good standard, so let's fix it. That's that's kind of what we're trying to do.
You kind of accomplish and the the setback thing was to help get to clear vision.
Yeah.
But you can get to clear vision another way
There are other ways.
Introducing the setback.
There are other ways, and but but to your earlier point about, you know, freestanding and monuments stuff, there there can be commonalities, there can be, you know, the ability to look at it through permanence and understand what you're trying to get at. There really isn't as much discrepancy we as as maybe.
Mr. Chair, if I may also, maybe just one clarification, but I thought it was not gonna be necessary given the language of my conversation, but uh simply because I'm suggesting permit versus land use application. It does not mean that I'm suggesting less regulation. But I'm suggesting just as much regulation, maybe even more regulation, just much more immediate, again, if you realize where the standard is sign, freestanding sign, not all of it twenty-five feet, then it's very easy for a plan director or a planner to say, it's twenty-eight, it's out, or twenty-four, it's okay. Or square footage or setback, and I agree with you again, Chris, I agree. The sign should not be connected to the building itself, I mean, unless it's, of course, it's a old sign, if it it created by proportion of the facade, but but if it's a freestanding sign, setback in relevance to relative to to the building makes little sense. It's really how far off you want it from the public right away, so again, I I thought it was obvious, but maybe it wasn't, and my apologies. Uh, I'm simply because again, I'm suggesting permit as a preference, is not, I'm not suggesting less regulation. I'm suggesting just as much, maybe even more, just more immediate.
My take, thank you. Commissioner Prickett, were you gonna say something? No, okay, good. Okay, uh, you have enough direction here?
I think we do, I just want to make sure you didn't tell Commissioner Prickett to shut up or something.
No. I think you you guys have said it all. You're good.
All right, all right.
Okay, are we ready for the next
Yeah.
item on the agenda?
This should be the entree, correct, Chris? The appetizer out of the way. This should be the entree, the appetizer item is out of the way.
It's entree time, yeah, we're if we're going right in, yep. All right, so please don't vomit your dinner after I have to share what 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 we have to do tonight, but we do have to start uh our conversation about the little project called House Bill two thousand and one. Uh, I have a very brief slideshow and then I'll want to just kind of keep a commerce, just just an open conversation, we are not drafting any sort of code or policies tonight, we're just getting reacquainted as far as what this is and what the expectations of this body and the city will have to be by June thirtieth of next year, so we're gonna open it up now uh for that. Give me one moment. And can everyone at home see a slideshow? Okay. All right, this is again a middle housing, House Bill two thousand and one discussion. There are a few clarifications I want to make sure everybody has in front of them, so that there's no presumptions as far as what this is or what this isn't. The first one, and you probably saw in your packet, um, the attachment, it says large cities, middle housing model code. And the very first thing you see is large cities defined as pop- cities of population of twenty-five thousand or more, well, a lot of people already were like, well, this doesn't apply to us, or you know, we're more of a medium sized city of ten to twenty-five thousand. But according to the law, uh, communities within the metro uh region are all considered large cities, with very, very few exceptions like Maywood Park, for instance. So we, even though we are at sixteen thousand three hundred, uh, are considered a large city. Wood Village is considered a large city. So we fall under the large city model. I, I, I will withhold comment. So I want to make sure that that's clearly understood, that we are considered and we fall under the large cities definition. Why that matters is this reason. Middle sized cities, so cities outside of the metro that were ten to twenty-five, that normally we would fall under. When the state law came in place, they had this June to, to get their codes updated. We had an extra year basically to prepare for this. Uh, middle sized cities only were required to add duplexes into their, their housing typologies. We have the whole cafeteria item menu to contend with. So before I get to the second point, let's quick reminder on what middle housing is. Middle housing are the following housing typologies. You have duplexes. You have triplexes, three units together. Quadplexes, which will show you a couple of typologies of how those can be arranged as well as duplexes and triplexes. Townhouses, which in the past, this, our community has called townhouses, row houses, or single family detached. Townhouses are technically attached, single family units. And something called cottage cluster development, which is, uh, historic development pattern. We haven't seen a whole lot of it here in Oregon, but basically a grouping of small homes around units. Second bullet point, House Bill 2001 does not restrict single family detached dwellings from being developed. It does not mean that you can no longer build, build a single family house that is on its own, right? You can always build that. So it does not sunset or delete or remove anybody's ability where it exists right now to do that. You can still build a single family house in a zoning district that's affected after July first of twenty twenty-two. What House Bill 2001 does do is it prohibits what we call exclusive residential zoning districts. It prohibits residential zoning districts from allowing only single family detached dwellings. House Bill 2001 also requires that the middle housing typologies that we just referenced have to be permitted in residential zoning districts and allow for clear and objective design standards that can apply. But they have to meet or match the same design standard criteria that you have for single family dwellings in the zone. So for instance, right now, the existing development code we have, each type of residential housing, excuse me, each type of zoning district has standards for single family residential development, basically gives sixteen, thirteen to sixteen menu items and says a house needs to hit on six or eight of these criteria. What we currently have is separate design standards for middle housing typologies. What the new law saying is whatever is applicable to a single family house should also be applicable to that. You cannot, in other words, create higher or different development design standards for middle housing typologies. They would have to match as close as possible to what you would allow for with a single family home. In other words, you cannot require enhanced design standards for one type of permitted land use over another. That's what it's saying. It's not saying that you have to get rid of all designs. You can still create them. They have to be clear and objective and they have to match as best as possible or as practical as possible to what is currently allowed for a single family detached dwelling. Are there any questions on any of these five clarification points?
Other than why?
We'll get to that. What does this rule affect? Well, it affects a good chunk of our city. Anything that's effectively yellow or orange shaded on the map is potentially affected. What's not clear right now are, uh, what's going to happen for any properties east of the Sandy River, given that that's the national scenic area. We're starting our conversations with the county to understand what their understanding of applicability is. We haven't gotten clarification on that. And the other thing is that certain subdivisions may actually be exempted from this law. So we'll talk about why that is. As you know, subdivisions typically come with CCNRs, covenants, conveyances and restrictions for platted subdivisions. For subdivisions that have established covenants that were created prior to the law's passage back in twenty nineteen. And where those covenants specifically say you can only build single family detached housing in this neighborhood, they are exempt from the law. But if the subdivisions have covenants that have no clear restrictions or not know black and light and white language, basically that basically says you can only build this, they are required to come into law. This also is for, uh, properties that are not within subdivision, it's just standard land or originally planted land in our, in our town center. We are still working through an analysis on which subdivisions may or may not be affected. We don't have that ready for tonight. We have to go through a lot of covenant documents for our best estimation as far as who may or may not be affected. And even in those cases, we may have to have, um, our lawyers verify that. Any questions on affected areas or the CCNR issue? If I can say if there's good news, there are some standards that are already in place within the code. For instance, the definitions that are listed in the model code, about a third of them are already in our code. Last major code update we did, you recall, was for the MU three zoning district and it came with new definitions and a lot of those definitions for middle housing typologies were included in that. So you've already got some definitions already in place. The design standards already exists for single family residential development and you could just simply apply them for middle housing where appropriate. So you do not have to go into some significant toolkit to create and establish design standards. And in the selected zoning districts, you already allow certain types of middle housing typologies, including an R ten and R seven, which is the bulk of your residential zoning. You, you already technically allow for duplexes in some cases and townhouses or duplexes that are currently divided by, um, that are on two different lots as opposed to just being on one lot. And R four, which is the darkest shade of orange, uh, you allow also for triplexes in addition to duplexes and townhouses. However, in those cases, in both of those cases, you have standards in place for minimum lot size standards. And you also have unique design standards that are different from single family homes and those are no longer enforceable. Here are a couple of examples of what we mean by duplex two, by the way, um, because I know there were some questions about that previously. Uh, the upper left shows a stacked duplex. So basically it looks like one giant building. It may have two separate doors and upstairs, you know, downstairs, you know, side by side duplex, which is probably the most common that we see here in Troutdale. A duplex that's attached by a breezeway. A duplex that's attached by garage wall. We also have a lot of that in Troutdale as well. Detached duplex units that are side by side. And in this case, uh, the duplexes are on one lot. And we do have allowances for one lot duplexes in Troutdale that, that does exist, but usually there is still a common wall uh, that is, that is there. And we have detached duplex units, uh, front and back. The typical one on the right that we see more often is the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit relationship. That's our typical, what we think of a house behind another house or dwelling unit behind another one. In this case, these are both considered primary dwellings. They're just positioned in such a way that it could be that way. So the yellow house in this case does not consider a accessory unit. It's considered a full primary unit as well. There are triplex and quadplex examples here. Uh, the top two there, uh, the one on the upper left is attached triplex, also a front and back. So more often than not, we think of triplexes being kind of the upper right example where you have three units facing the street or a right of way. But triplexes can, can be stacked, um, backwards as opposed to out, out in front. And then I think Commissioner Wilcox has mentioned this before about what quadplex may or may not be. Uh, the bottom left example is what we call stacked quadplex, two over two type arrangement. We have two ground floor and two top floor units. But there are instances of considering a detached quadplex of, um, four isolated buildings, but all within one property. Are there any questions about the typologies of duplexes, triplexes or quadplexes?
Just assuming that have a detached.
Yes. Yeah.
This is Mr. Wilcox. Um, I was gonna draw to your attention those split or the physically separated duplexes. That doesn't make any sense to me. Look like this same kind of houses that we're in, they're close together, but they're totally individual four walls on the exterior, um. When they're defining duplex, as I've seen in the past, is they're on the same lot. I've also seen instances where you have, um, land leases, where you own the, the structure, at least the land is what they're talking about with a, uh, two separate, you know, separated, physically separated duplexes. I don't understand how you differentiate between separated duplexes or quad, quadplexes for that matter, when they're not physically attached in any way.
Yeah, um, I, to be honest, Commissioner Wilcox, I'm not sure if I fully understand it all the way through either. My presumption, at least on the quadplex example, would be you would treat it almost like a condominium plat, where maybe you have the inside the wall unit, shall we call it, the structure or the portion of the structure that would be owned uniquely, and then the grounds are either owned by, and it sounds kind of silly to say an HOA with four people, or maybe there's a common area. Or maybe, you know, one is owned by the property owner and the other three leased, or actually occupied by the property owner and the other three are leased in that situation.
It seems to be a lot of the thinking behind this is to increase density. That brings me to another question. Does Troutdale have a, you mentioned a minimum lot sizes, which are, sound like are prohibited under this bill. But, um, what about a minimum, uh, structure size, minimum floor, floor, uh, square footage? This allow?
I missed the latter half of that. I'm sorry. Can you repeat that about? What about? And then you trailed off a little bit.
There was a mention of minimum lot sizes. What about minimum, uh, square footage of the actual house? Talking about, talking about a cluster of tiny houses?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to go into the particulars. I know with, I believe it's with cottage clusters, there, there is a uh, minimum size for that, but I don't recall for the other typologies if that, that existed.
Chris?
Good.
Do you remember attending, uh, two or three years ago, the Portland State University Institute for Sustainable Solution tour of the middle housing in Portland? I, I think if I remember correctly, we had a final stop also in Troutdale. Uh, the plaza, I guess, from across from C D L. Do you remember that? Did you, did you attend that, by the way?
I did not.
Okay. Because I think that the final stop was actually in Troutdale. Uh, we, we were shown example and the reason was if you did, if you still retain some of the literature that went into details about the intent, of course, of, of what we're discussing right now. Okay. Thank you.
So kind of mentioned at the, at the top of the presentation to tonight really is more discussion, delivery of this information and clarifications as far as what this bill does or what this bill does not do. Just some additional commentary from people who have inquired about it or might be thinking about long-term plans for either vacant or underdeveloped property. We're not seeing a whole lot of people coming to us, let's say, that have an existing single family house. Say, and I'll just pick a name, Sandy Palisades. Where it's like, I gotta, I got a single family home. I'm hearing this bill's coming along. I want to put a quadplex up. Uh, we just have not been getting a lot of that type of traffic yet. And that, that could be just the case. What we do have people though are, um, we, matter of fact, Alex and I, we spoke to, to, to one gentleman just earlier this week, where there may be an oversized lot or a port of the ability to partition a property. But the property may have access challenges or just nice natural scenery and they're looking just for flexibility. And it's like, well, do we just do a typical standard subdivision like we would normally do or partition? Or might we do something else? And I think what we're seeing is cottage cluster development in particular seems to be of interest to a lot of people. And the reason for it is there may be some flexibility in the placement of units. Uh, there may be the ability to have smaller units, but still, you know, within one property and the idea that it would not require as much physical infrastructure to develop, you know, your, um, your half-street improvements, if you will, or if you have to build a cul-de-sac or whatever, it may be a little bit less impactful on a developer's bottom line to consider that. Uh, it might also allow for a little bit more creativity on the placement of these potential units. Although this is admittedly the one typology that we do not have any experience in. These, as you guys all know, we have townhomes, we have two plexes, we have triplexes. So it's not like Troutdale doesn't have experience with middle housing. Matter of fact, we're developing one hundred units of middle housing here in the next two years currently. So while I know there's a lot of concern with this bill and a lot of concern about this law, I think the reality is the communities that have significant tracts of undeveloped lands, communities, say, especially to the south and the west of, of the region are far more under the gun as far as how they may have thought they were going to develop property and now are being told they need to develop it in such a fashion. We really, if you look at our, at our map, there's only a finite amount of properties left that we can truly develop at a residential capacity. And honestly, the market, more than anything, will suggest that the dictates, um, you know, as far as what the highest and best use of property is. And the market still suggests that single family detached dwelling is still very desirable uh, in our market. So while the opportunity exists for middle housing to enter the market and be more established in our zoning districts across the board, that doesn't mean that you're going to be developing middle housing. Particularly when we already have properties that are already zoned for that and planned for that. So, um, while I know it's going to be a big fundamental change and I know we collectively will be getting lots of arrows and darts and angry letters and angry testimony about it, and it's admittedly a little bit beyond our control. I think we also have to come in with a dose of reality. Which says that this community is desirable for many reasons. A lot of people still want to build single family detached homes and that's okay. And none of that changes. So that's
Your single family detached homes will be small on small lots.
Potentially, but potentially not. I mean, if you, I mean, if you have a quarter acre lot in a R ten zoning district and that's what people want to build.
So if you have a half acre lot and you want to put in a three bedroom house.
You can do that.
Would that be allowed?
Sure.
Since you're saying cannot tell them, no, you can't do it, but you can't, you're not, we're not necessarily able to promote that.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if somebody wanted to come in to an R ten lot right now, a quarter acre lot and say, I want to put up a triplex. Right now, we can't really tell them they, they can, but come July first, we cannot prohibit them from doing it. But at the same rate, keep in mind, just because something is permitted in your zoning district doesn't mean it's actually developable. There are still things that have to matter. There are still certain things, setback issues. property terrain considerations, where it may not be, the, the lot itself may not be fully developable. Um, you know, even aesthetic considerations, you do have already existing design standards, albeit not completely regimented for, for how you expect residential development to look and feel. If somebody wants to come in and build a box, they got problems. They can't build a box. Somebody wants to put in portage windows like, like they're on a submarine, they can't do that. You know, there's still some things the community has in its toolkit that it can, it can require a certain caliber and expectation of development, provided it is clear and objective.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, Commissioner Allen.
So I actually see this as terrible. People react to densification differently. And some of those reactions, as you densify people, there becomes more conflict between neighbors. And you end up uh, turning into conflict and more violence. I don't think I, I don't think that it's by accident that Portland's starting to look more like Chicago. Um, as you've seen them densify more, it's not as pleasant a place to be at this moment. And then I also see that as we push people from homeownership to more rental type situations, we are basically incentivizing uh, generational uh, economic disadvantage and in some cases poverty. And it's just not a good thing. I feel like I feel like they're trying to force Troutdale to be more like failed developments in other areas of our region. So the best thing that we're going to be able to do with this, if you can't fight it, is at least try to make the environment a pleasant place to be as much as possible so that you can reduce some of the anxiety that people inevitably feel. And that's going to, that's probably going to be the challenge. How do we make it still a nice place to, to be? That's all I had.
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Allen, and furthermore, it's uh, the overreach of the government is getting unbearable. And what we can do with the properties that we want to do with the properties only if the government approves it. And I'm a little bit concerned about that.
But I guess I'll just say from my standpoint, this is disappointing. Although we haven't seen a lot of it here, I have seen this happen with a friend of mine that lives in Portland. House next to them became vacant and ended up being demolished and a fourplex went up. And it really doesn't look very pretty. Um, considering there's virtually no setbacks. And it's built right on top of them. And it's frustrating for me because we talk about people getting into homeownership, wanting to get into homeownership. And when someone goes into homeownership, they look at the area around them. How's this zone? How's this community? How's this area going to look like for them? And then Salem comes down with the great mighty hand and says, you guys have been planning your community for 70 years. You now not know what you do. We need to do it for you. Because you're not capable of doing it by yourself.
That is the trend.
And uh, it's, it's sad. I know we haven't seen it yet, but we probably will see it. And when it happens to somebody next door, I'm sure they're going to be in here saying, what the heck is this? And um, I know we have to live with it. You know, you're, you're stuck having to implement it. It's just, it's really sad that between the city and the county and metro and the LCD. We couldn't handle this ourselves. We needed the governor to step in and say, you guys don't know how to zone land.
It's, it's disappointing because this community and, and some of you have been on the planning commission, I'm not going to say how many years, but you've been on planning commission for a good duration of this community's development. And it's not like we haven't, matter of fact, specifically on middle housing. This community has had duplex development, triplex, quadplex, has encouraged it either through plan development or just just good policy, town center plan, even from 20 plus years ago, encouraged a lot of this stuff. The, the, the problem, and um, I'm not going to, again, we're kind of, as staff in a position, we have to kind of carry this water, um, but the, the problem is that other communities have not been as open to doing that and have, especially in their, as they're expanding, there's their city limits because they can, and in our case, we can't because we don't have urban reserves to do that. We're basically just going for one type of development and one type of development only. And what that meant is also that means our community basically gets gets less of a flexibility to determine its development outcome, because these other communities were taking advantage of it.
And I would agree. I think you have some of that, but I also think that when you take the entire state, be it Portland, be it Troutdale, Burns, Lincoln City, wherever, lump them all together and the state tries to operate this like a Chinese cheese widget Walmart factory. And lump everybody together and put out the same product and think it's just going to work everywhere. Is a recipe for trouble. And we, we all kind of feel the same pain and we can go on about this, but it's just, it's really disappointing that our government has decided that we are this inept and incompetent. That they have to come in and do this to save the day.
I would, I would say the worst part is the lack of minimal setbacks. It's going to be more difficult to try to still make it desirable that people can feel at ease and relaxed to live here.
Well, and there's a lot of suggestion concessions and things of that nature too. It should be hard on the community.
If there is somewhat of a silver lining, when we're talking about middle housing, you're also talking about especially with townhomes, you're talking about owner occupation more often than not. Like for instance, the 100 units we're developing of middle housing are all separate tax lots. They're all units for sale. So I know that's always, that's been kind of a related concern in our overall housing discussion, I think it was brought up earlier tonight, is are we creating homeownership opportunities? Quite frankly, you could argue, and again, I'm not trying to be devil's, I am being a little devil's advocate here, but you know, in a way, think of it as an opportunity to expand homeownership or pathways to homeownership for your residents.
I agree, but I think at the end of the day, we're creating more rental units than we are ownership units.
Do you know that for sure? I mean, I would just, just a fair question. How, how, why, why would you come to that conclusion?
Uh, because if you're taking single-family residential property and zoning it to allow for a fourplex. So unless no one does that, you've got a three to one ratio there. If I put up four units, they're probably going to be rentals. I put up one unit, it's probably going to be ownership.
That's true. That's true.
I have a question for Chris.
Sure, go.
I'm glad you brought the, brought the idea of townhouses. Um, I want to ask you if you're, you're familiar with the uh, D R Horton project, just next door to Springwater High School on Palmquist across Highway 26.
I know, and I'm not familiar with it, but obviously we know who D R Horton is.
Okay, um, well, it's um, I had hoped to get in there while they were still uh, for sale, but uh, didn't get a chance to. It went too fast, I think. Uh, but it's the combination of uh, townhouses and they have mixed in with single-family homes. They have uh, rear-entry garages. So it's quite a uh, a mixed community and it's uh, you know, being D R Horton, it's owner occupied, you know, 100%. It's not in the part, it's not in apartment development. So it's, it's actually pretty, pretty attractive looking development.
Yeah, and I mean, this community has previously demonstrated that same ability to have planned development accommodate these types of uses. I think Commissioner Prig, if I'm not mistaken, your neighborhood is an example of that, right?
Ours was, I moved in in nine, I'm going to date myself here, 1980, and there were duplexes, and we also have single lot line housing as well on both ends of the spec, we have some that duplex that back up to the high school and the park, uh, imagination station along that area, and then we have some that uh, buffer us from the commercial on the um, south side of our but we have a real good mix. Um, not and the real, most of the time, there's no problem with that. I've lived this way and it isn't an issue. But it was, so, and the same with the Safeway complex over there. They have apartments and commercial than uh, single family. So Troutdale was really way ahead of the game a long time ago. I just didn't see as much in the near future, you know, recently, but it's been here for a long time. And we're also different lot sizes. We go from R10 to R4. So, and we're right in, my house is right in the middle. We're at, we have like 8,000 square foot lot. So I mean, it's just all over the place, which is kind of nice.
Think that also goes back to ownership and pride in your ownership versus rentals, and you're going to have more rentals coming with the duplexes versus townhomes, and they're going to, I don't know if as many people are going to take his pride in their neighborhood if they're rentals.
Potentially.
That's, that's kind of what scares me. At the same rate, though, what we're also seeing, and we're seeing this with new development, like with, like for instance, one of the townhome projects that we have is introducing um, accessory dwelling units built into the townhome. We are seeing a trend particularly, um, I, I don't want to completely typecast, but um, it's, it's, it's been documented in academic research with Hispanic Latino populations, the, and Asian populations in particular, uh, multi-generational housing. And we're seeing a trend where uh, duplexes, even if they were on separate lots, but basically one structure, you know, grandma might live in one lot, and then the nuclear, the nuclear family may live right next door. So I mean, not every duplex may turn into a rental necessarily.
Right.
So I think we just need to be careful and mindful that we are seeing those types of housing trends occur too. Um, and while that doesn't mean every, every single-family home in Sandy Palisades, I just keep picking on Sandy Palisades tonight, but pick your neighborhood, any single-family home doesn't mean it's automatically all going to become duplex or rental.
No, and, and I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying it has the potential to, and as a neighbor, that would be disappointing to me. To know that, you know, something like that could happen.
But keep also in mind this, folks, we also have a fair number of single-family homes right now detached that are rental homes too.
Correct.
So single-family detached doesn't mean ownership, just off, yes, there's a higher propensity of homeownership, but I, I think we have to be mindful of that too.
Chair Stephenson, we also have uh, group homes in our neighborhood for um, the people that can't, you know, that aren't physically able to either care for themselves. We also, I also have a, a neighbor who has a mother-in-law's apartment that she built it that, they built it that way a long time ago. So I have a, like a good variety of of demographic and social, we get it all here. So I think Troutdale again is ahead of the game. But again, I'm concerned that the state is kind of overstepping too. That bothers me more than anything, that we've always done what was right for our community, and yet they don't think we can do that anymore. And we're lumped as a large city because we're part of the metropolitan area. That's wrong. We shouldn't be.
We, we fought that. I was in the Speaker of the House of Representatives, or excuse me, of the, of the lower house in, in Salem. I was in her office with 10 other planners from communities, say between 10,000 and 50,000 people begging, just, hey, we are not a large city. But I won't necessarily pin it exclusively on her. We made the case, we should be treated like a medium city. Maybe you consider duplex or maybe townhome development as somewhat allowable, but please don't just call us a large city, and, and that obviously did not get changed before the bill became law. So it wasn't a lack of trying from her end too. So we're, we're kind of, again, we're, we're, we're the messengers here.
No, and I know, and it's also disappointing our representative's position on this. Feel kind of abandoned.
Another great example, why to vote.
Yes, all right.
So this is now before you, uh, you have the model code, you also have the slightly more boring, though, this is where the model code, it's stuff from the uh, Division 46 uh, administrative rules that came through. This is less important for you folks to look at and review. The model code is really where you want your energies, because that's more directly applicable to what we will have to do down when to change our code. The, the, the critical thing to know is this, if we choose to just say, the hell with you state, we're just not going to even pay attention to this. We, we technically have that right. We don't have
Communities are.
And some communities will do that, but then you should know that the model code will come into effect on July 1st, 2022. So what they've written is what is, what we as a staff have, have to enforce or have to regulate by. If there are things in the model code that you do not like, or you feel could be a better fit, or maybe, maybe there's a way you incentivize or encourage one type middle housing typology over the other, that's going to be important for us to know, because that might be grounds for where we have some flexibility within the confines of this, this rule. Uh, of this law, I should say. So it is going to be important for you folks to look through this model code. And maybe in about a month or so, we come back to the table and the, you know, we may not like it, but where might we be able to have some maneuverability and some room? And that allows your staff then to get to work on something that's a little bit easier to digest. Unless your prevailing opinions, like the hell with it, we're just going to move, move forward with it. Um, the one thing, and, and that should also be made is this model code would be inserted in the areas where it'd be affected, and our code has something called severability, where just because this code comes in, it doesn't invalidate the rest of the code that we have. It doesn't change our zoning districts, it cannot change our zoning map or anything like that. It doesn't rezone properties. Those things are still in effect. What it's just saying is you now have to allow these typologies in these zoning districts with these standards. Unless you choose to make some local edits that can still pass, pass the uh, the smell test.
Who's the enforcement arm of this?
DLCD. So when we, whenever we do a, a development code update, DLCD has is notified and would review our changes.
So they've signed off on it?
Yeah, this is basically every community's starting point, some communities, and I don't know, John Paulo, if you're doing that aggression, if you guys are starting from scratch, or if you're using model code as your starting point. I've always found just starting with model code is easier, letting you all digest it, and then figure out if there's something we can do locally to amend it accordingly.
So um, were they like, is this patterned after Chicago or Watts or Bitterman or Harlem or anything? We tie this together too, or they just come up with this on their own?
They hired a consultant who um, is versed in, in studying it, that has architectural backgrounds, and they looked at a variety of neighborhoods beyond the ones you just described.
Okay, actually, Mr. Chair, sorry for interjecting. The, the original model code from Oregon, when I started to work in Oregon in 2002 was already in effect. So it's really, it was drafted for small-sized municipality to try to interject some good architecture. to try to interject some good architectural and urban design. It really was a captain pace from your guideline is to a much larger document that will make sense also by the ministry department. So, um, I, I don't think is it takes a extremely large, Megalopolises as an, as an example. Um, I, I would like to make one more comment. I think I heard what you say. I was talking before about the tour that we had and two or three years ago about this middle housing through Portland State University in Portland. Uh, Chris, uh, uh, just for the sake of understanding better the subject, because in general, these documents are not gonna change opinion necessarily, but I'm gonna open windows of opportunity for a conversation and say, ah, we can do this, ah, they can do that. So if you have the ability to put your hands on one of those documents, I'm gonna search also who some colleague of mine, we were there. Because I don't remember for every single housing typology, I mean, we saw probably thirty examples in, in Portland around. Uh, there's the, the classical ADU, there's the standard uh second home detached, the smaller one, the duplex, that I don't remember every typology, but the, the local um legislation has the ability to, to, to introduce legislation. And one of the, they did in Portland, for example, that I think is positive, because of, of, for what we were discussing before, uh, ownership, was that within a certain period of years uh, the, the unit uh would come for sale, and the renter would have first right of refusal. So, in really in the, in, in the mechanism, again, we can debate and disagree about the political ramification, but I don't wanna go there, I wanna talk technically. In, in that respect, we, we create an incentive for homeownership, uh, realizing that there is a dysfunctional uh, real estate market. And so, and again, that, that file event document is not necessary again to, to change opinion, to win a debate, is just to say somebody thought it for five, six years before, maybe, but it's something we can agree on it to make it ours, maybe introduce it, you know, and maybe tweak it a little bit and, and go in a different direction, but I think it will be uh, for all of us, benefits to, to try to see if you can put our hands and, wherever's time, read some, some of it. I was gonna try to do the same if I can find it.
Well, and that is what we do, and that's what we will do. It's just, um, it's disappointing.
One other thing to make mention of, a lot of plan, I mean, every, every city in the metro, pretty much, and, and many around the state are going through what we're going through as well, and there may be ideas that are generated, say, like a city Sherwood, very similar to ours, they may have a wonderful, dare I say, a wonderful idea on maybe something that works for their community that might also be impressionable for us. There's no, there's no copyrights or trademarks in, in developing code. So if, if we hear of a good idea, we'll bring it to the table. Simultaneously, if you folks are following this issue on your own, if you hear of something, bring it to the table. Um, there is a framework, uh, they are, they have given us the crayolas of what we have to use, but we may be able to use it in such a way that benefits us a little bit more. So, um I would prefer to be constructive as, as, as much as we can, even if we don't like that we're even in this position to begin with.
Well, I think we have to do the best we can with what we have.
Right.
Um, I'm simply coming from a position that I want to get out there that I, I don't agree with this type of government.
You mentioned earlier.
Pardon me?
So you mentioned earlier, who would, who would enforce these rules, would be this body. We have to adhere.
Yeah, I mean, who will enforce our decisions, which would be LCDS?
That's pretty much all we have. We just wanted to, to open that, at that discussion.
Open that can.
Open that can. Well, it, it is something that, that is going to, gonna follow us here for the next nine months, so uh, we cannot run and hide from it. We obviously have a few items on our docket before that, but especially once you hit the new year, it's gonna be it's gonna be front and center, so better, better become acquainted with it now than later. And, um, you know, it's, it's one thing for staff to present it, it's another thing for you folks basically being told to approve some version of this. I, we want to recognize that won't be an easy task for you all either, so.
Alright, you're still locked.
I guess I am, huh?
You are.
What do we need to communicate about? Okay, um, there should have been an email out, I think Alex sent it out today, just confirming everybody's availability for October thirteenth. Uh, since we have all seven members, are we, is anybody expecting to have a conflict on the thirteenth?
Uh, none at this point, that was my answer, but you know, it's almost three weeks away, so I don't know, but in general, I would say, at this point, I would say no, but.
Uh, reason for it, we will have a hearing expected. Uh, it'll be a hearing, a, I should stress, a de novo, a new application for the uh Fox Ridge property that was under consideration uh last month. It is a new application. Uh, there are some changes to the circumstances of, of that, and um it'll be in front of you, uh, in your packet here in two weeks, and it'll be uh, in front of you for a hearing on the thirteenth. So that's why we needed to do a check on, on um attendance there. A few other things to communicate, next Wednesday, which is the fifth Wednesday of the month, um, we are having the annual rent burden meeting. Uh, Alex, you want to talk about that a little bit more at length?
Yeah, sure. So we're gonna be having our annual rent burden meeting at the Troutdale Terrace, which is an affordable housing project, and we're having, it's going over some of the required talking points provided to us that were mandated to talk about with rent burden, and then we are gonna switch it up from presenting more, less of data numbers and just statistics of people, and we're having more of a roundtable kind of discussion from people, both the management group from the Troutdale Terrace, as well some of the residents that do live there, and other groups that have more of a personal experience in rent burdened communities, what these communities can look like versus what stereotypically you would assume of affordable housing might look like. So I think that would provide some, um some just better background on how these projects uh affect and how people living in Troutdale, you know, contribute to the community, even though they're living in certain, you know, affordable housing communities. So I think it'll be a good, good time.
Um, that, that'll start at six o'clock as opposed to seven o'clock. Um, and it'll also be either live in person, or we'll, we'll have a Zoom link, and I think we're working on the mechanics of that, and that'll go out to you and, and CAC as well. And City Council, of course. Few other items, we're, we're, uh, construction remains very busy throughout. Uh, many of you have seen the construction uh across two fifty-seventh on the food cart pod, which is underway. Uh, the first homes in the um Lancaster Park uh townhome subdivision are starting to be occupied, and uh the Howard Estates, it's now called Gateway Landing subdivision, which is a little bit further to the east, where they recently cut some roads to. Uh, they should be going vertical here very soon too. So those were, when I mentioned earlier, the hundred units of middle housing, those two subdivisions alone are contributing to that. Um, another townhome, well, this is an apartment project, although they look like townhomes from the street, they're designed to be like townhomes. Uh, it's right across from Reynolds High School, uh Cherry Park Apartments, that development is also nearing completion. They look like townhomes, but they're actually apartments. Um, very expensive apartments too. They're very, very luxury style apartments, um, but really nicely built. Um, they are wrapping up as well. Arby's is set to re, reopen next week. We recall, we had the fire from several years ago.
Been closed since.
Yep, they are hiring. Well, after, after my head is on a stick, after presenting all this information, I'll apply for a job at Arby's. I guess they, they are hiring right now. Um, another meeting, uh, I may, may have mentioned, I think, two weeks ago, but again, keep on your radar, October twentieth is the Parks Master Plan Open House. Uh, likely to be hosted by uh, um, Troutdale Elementary School in their multipurpose room. And if we have it there, it'll run from two to seven. It'll be kind of an open house to try to get kids in the school and the families, as well as any typical open house participants leading into the Parks Advisory Community meeting. So that'll be two to seven. That's still subject to change, so, but just keep that date, if you don't mind. Anything else? Oh, I guess those, the, another minor detail, uh, we have hired an additional planner. Uh, our new associate planner, uh, her name's Melissa Johnston. She's coming to us from uh Woodland, Washington, so just north of Vancouver. She will start with us on October nineteenth, so you won't see her at the next meeting, but you'll meet her at her meeting after that, whenever that may be. So we are happy to uh welcome her to town and throw her right into this mix.
We're harmless.
What's that?
We're harmless.
We're harmless. And that's probably enough for us tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Well, I'm grateful to hear about the new planner, and also grateful to hear about Arby's. Looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Uh, yes, actually, I have a couple issues uh raised by um the Fox Ridge um application, but they're not specific to Fox Ridge, so I think I can speak freely on the concerns I have. Um, I made a reference in uh the pool of minutes about the uh parking. Let me just read a quote from the uh Code nine point oh four oh, reduction of required parking spaces. Required off-street parking spaces may be reduced by one parking space for every on-street parallel parking space located adjacent to the subject site. For purposes of calculating the amount of adjacent on-street parking spaces, the following applies, that gives the dimensions of the parking spaces. Um, when we were talking about their meeting, the uh minimum standards for parking and, you know, coming up short, obviously, they were being given credit for the fourteen on-street parking spaces, but then my understanding was those spaces didn't apply when the uh variance percentage was being calculated. So I'd kind of like to get some clarification on that. And if you could address that, then I'll go on to my next, next item.
Were you about to say something?
Go ahead.
There were, there was an item in the narrative that they had submitted previously that, that suggested that. Um, that's one thing that we're gonna also pay attention when we review this new application, as well as any other application we may get for, that may trigger this clause. Um, I appreciate you bringing it up, and um I think by the time we'll have the hearing on the thirteenth, at least for this upcoming application, we'll have clarification on what the impact is and whether this bonus, for lack of a better phrase, uh impacts the variance request, or how it benefited it.
Okay.
Committed not to answer, Mr. uh, Mr. Wilcox, but, but one thing we will make sure of, and we'll also talk with our city attorney beforehand, is we'll have clarification on what the number is and the actual degree of the variance being requested, even if it differs from the applicant's understanding of how this provision benefits them or doesn't benefit them.
Yeah, okay, that, that's kind of what I was looking for, because like, like I mentioned in a previous meeting, I, I was perfectly willing to give him credit for the fourteen on-street spaces toward their, their minimum requirement. Uh, the other item I had was a, another concern raised by that particular application in that uh hearing that staff could um do a variance of up to thirty percent on uh quantifiable, I guess it applies to any quantifiable uh measurement. Couple specifics would be, say, a, a apartment complex called for three hundred parking spaces. If you give them a thirty percent variance, that drops it down to, they're down to two hundred and ten. Uh, another example is, if you have a thirty-five foot height allowance, thirty-five percent or thirty percent variance, we bump them up to forty feet, forty and a half feet. So I'm kind of concerned that um type two decision is, is giving way too much leeway to, to staff, basically.
Well, i- i- it could be, but at the same rate, I think your, at least your current staff understands where, where issues, particularly ones that require notification might be so-called nuclear issues. And keep in mind, the last application you had from Fox Ridge could have been handled by staff as a type-two decision. But we also knew that there was going to be significant neighborhood interest, as well as testimony in this type of application. And our code provides us the right to elevate any application, whether it be type one or type two to Planning Commission for consideration in full public hearing. We just think that's good governance, and that, that applies whether it's parking or height, because those are typically the two big issues that people care about. Whether correctly or, or maybe, you know, subjectively, but, but that's we, we try to be pretty cerebral as far as knowing what could impact the community, as well as where people may appeal our decision. Obviously, staff likes the latitude that we have, but we also are trying to be mindful and respectful of, and logical when situations arise where we think our decision needs to go to the unpaid volunteers as opposed to the paid staff.
Well, and I, I think it's, it's great that staff has the latitude. Um, I think this application in particular is probably was gonna tip the scales more than maybe some other ones did. And, you know, you look at it, and yeah, you're right, you could go from three hundred spaces down to two-ten, you could go from thirty-five feet to forty-six feet. Um, there's a number of things we could do, and I think this one kind of showed maybe how impactful it can be with the community, and that's why it was bumped up, and I think that was the right thing to do. I think you guys did great doing that. I think it, sometimes it can put you guys in bad position too.
Well, but at the same rate, it's a service to the developer and the applicant, if you think about it, because if the staff has a high expectation of an appeal of a decision that we might make, it's gonna become, it's gonna go before this body anyway. So if we're anticipating that, we've already wasted then four weeks of the applicant's time, because then we have to re-notify everybody. So we are very upfront with the applicant, we, we just, we just, with applicants when they're in that situation, be like, look, your application on paper, we can make the decision. We think you will have frustrated neighbors about it. You have this, that right, you want to go with that, right?
And I guess I will say this current staff, I would agree with them.
Sure.
But it's always, you know, what if there was a truck? And something happened and somebody else was in that chair?
Well, I would say that your planning commission, the planning.
We just have to temper.
Well, but at the same rate, I think if, if, and because I think this has occurred in the past, where maybe you didn't have a staff like that, where you've made changes to the code, where there was a little bit more expectation that, that a planning commission gets to review certain things and the staff doesn't. I mean, the thresholds you have have been in place prior to this current iteration of staff arriving. And keep in mind too, from the developer or the applicant's point of view, if one person is making the decision as opposed to four out of seven, you know, am I gonna be more comfortable advancing a project? There is a certain give and take on that too. There's a certain level of risk expectation, even though you're all plenty good people of coming before a board. It requires a lot more preparation, it requires a lot more intention, and frankly, in some cases, it, it intimidates certain projects from happening, and that may be a good thing or maybe a bad thing, but that is a consideration, and that's why I think you, we were given wide berth in this regard.
Right. It's just a, a pointed discussion.
Sure, it, but it's a community value, and it can be revisited at any time. That's not to agree or disagree, but.
Right. Commissioner Wilcox?
Uh, yes, um, Chris, you mentioned the, an appeal process, that, that would only apply if the uh applicant was denied. I mean, there's no such process if a private citizen said, hey, you know, what's, what's the, uh, planning, planning director doing approving a 46-foot building without, you know, planning commission approval? Is there a procedure for, for doing that?
Anybody who provides commentary on an application. So for instance, if, if you owned a property, 35 feet of height limit, and you say, well, I want to build a 40-foot tall building, and so it would, it would be a type-two variance application. It's a staff decision, but staff still has an obligation to notify your neighbors. And if a neighbor is so aggrieved by our decision, a neighbor simply has to put down 250 bucks and says, staff got it wrong, I'm appealing it to planning commission.
Okay, so there, there is a process. That's, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
There's a process, and there's also low, low cost of entry, quite frankly, and that's mandated also by state law. There's a low cost of entry for a, an aggrieved party who has provided testimony or commentary on an application to take it to planning commission. It could work the other way too. Like if we deny the height thing, the applicant would be like, no, staff is being egregious in this regard. I'm appealing it too. So rights, rights of the engaged, if you will.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilcox?
You just spoke.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Commissioner Waddell?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Priggett?
I just have one question. Um, code enforcement. I know it takes a while to get cars, like there's a certain amount of time they can only sit once they're tagged. Well, what happens when the tag is removed?
When you're saying the tags, are you talking about like the, the orange placards that go on the window saying you're about to be towed?
Yeah.
That is defacing a public sign, which is a misdemeanor in municipal code, and so in addition to your car being towed right away, you have another problem on your hands.
I think the original issue was, it was an abandoned car behind Old Depot with the windows busted out. And half the back panel was caved in with a hole in it and carpet inside it. Don't know why it was, but it took a while for it to get there. But I noticed the sign was there, but it was gone and that, within a couple of days, somebody, some kid probably took it off. I don't know.
Yeah.
But then do they go with grease pen later and mark a date when it should be towed?
Well, when they put the placard up, I know, like what, what Joe, our officer would do is we'd keep a record as far as when, when he did it, he would photo the timestamp, and he would put a reminder on his, his iPad app that he has.
Okay.
I suspect the county sheriff's office would probably, something similar, but I don't know for sure.
Well, it was in the city limits, so I'm, I'm sure it was from our but I think it's gone. I haven't been out to see.
Yeah, that, that, that stretch of town, unfortunately, behind home, has been problematic. We've had a few calls. It might be the same one you're.
Yeah, it's the same car, probably. It's sitting right next to the stop sign almost.
It is gone. They probably pushed it down the hill and it's 1,000 acres with all the other ones.
No, they'd have to push it quite a ways down.
It's been a persistent issue all summer, is abandoned, were just beat-up vehicles. It's an issue for us, unfortunately.
A lot of damage.
Well, thank you, Chris. That's all I have. Thanks for the wonderful presentation today, too.
Commissioner Mamone?
Hi, yeah, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a question for staff, actually. I don't know, I don't know if it's doable, but uh, this is obviously self-interest is a sort of discomfort for me, will make me have panic attacks. So every time we have a planning commission, a couple of days before the day of the committee, I, I have a panic attack because I cannot find the email with the meeting ID and the passcode. I mean, I know the passcode by now. I know what it is, at least that. But, but the meeting ID is really panicking. So I was wondering if it is possible that in the packets that you sent on the agenda, underneath you just put for us, for the seven of us, say, just in case, you know, because I, I opened the package, I can breathe, right? At least, I know it's self-interest, but maybe apparently Commissioner Priggett, you seems to, to to agree with me. So is it doable? Is it possible will be that become too much for staff?
No, that should be doable.
Great, thank you. Uh, and the, very well, anonymity. Uh, one statement, um, I, I agree with, with the chair. Uh, Chris, I am, I am, and I'm talking about the the last development, all the issue of the variance, the parking, uh, the compact, no compact. I, I am grateful that you made the call, uh, to to raise the level of scrutiny to include, to include the, the planning commission. But, um, and obviously, this is, this, it is a conversation, if it's going to become a conversation to, to be put in that. I'm still perplexed with a, there are development of that complexity. Even though in a district that has, they use as a principal permitting use, be allowed as an administrative review, um, that's is such a complex development, you know, if, if we have also in a DRE, we have also in principal uses, um, development that automatically are DREs, which, 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 which include a quasi-judicial, you know, scrutiny by the design commission or the planning commission. So uh, again, I'm, I'm grateful you made the call. Um, if it was self-interest or no, it doesn't matter. It was, it was a good call, I think. Survival instinct to cover a mask, I must imagine. But in the end, it was a good call. At least I agree with it. But again, I'm perplexed. Is, is there anything we can do in the future to see that at a certain level, you know, you, you judge is a DRA, DRB, DRC, DRE, that complexity, not necessarily about, because we do DRE of multifamily apartment that are in principal media users, that the district allows that, but it is by scrutiny, a quasi-judicial. And then, and maybe it's a fair conversation, but I just want to throw it away because now that we're having this conversation, this comment, I thought, boy, am I glad, because.
Yeah, I mean, you, you definitely testified to that, um, during the hearing, and I think it's still a worthy conversation of having, but obviously with our upcoming application might be hard to do in the, in the meantime, but I, I do think you could have a bigger picture conversation as a committee, as a commission, rather. And frankly, I think city council has to be involved, because historically, and correct me if I'm wrong, for those of you who've been here longer, the city has shied away or not really desired to have a design review committee or committee, you know, a, a full act. It's basically been, if you hit the criteria, if it's permitted, you're, you're through.
We wanted to do it, was kind of that.
Right. So I guess that becomes more of a philosophical question for frankly, you folks, and ultimately city council, because that's your responsibility. Should you do that?
So, and again, it is a conversation. I, if, if it is an introduction of the design commission or not, if you still go for the planning commission, but the complexity of a project sometime, or it demands, like you say, four, six, seven, you know, majority of seven minds, but with also, again, we don't work in a vacuum. We, I, I value when I read your comment, when I read your rationale, sometime I can follow it, sometime I agree, sometime I don't agree, but it's always challenging, because it forces me to think outside the box. So in the end, I know we have given the jurisdiction to make a final decision, but, but it is a ten effort. And so by bringing it, when it's so complex, to the scrutiny of everybody, but again, and that will obviously would demand, would demand a, a, a code amendment of it and decide what kind of classification. But so you tell me that we can do something about the meeting code ID and the pass, and the password, passcode, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Whitaker?
Yeah, um, just a couple of quick things. More for Mr. Mamone. Uh, when we talk about design and design, you know, there's always the Dell's advocate, it came up a couple of times now where he keeps bringing up, where it has been brought up about the, the Foxford Apartments and the barbecue play, everything else, and all the cars being around it, and that's a bad thing. And I'm kicking myself in the ass for not saying it last time, but I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to be that apartment next to it. I'm fine having the cars next to it, having the parking spots next to it, because I don't want to be in that apartment next to it, listening to the kids, listening to the barbecue, interrupting everything else. So there's always two sides to every coin of, you know, debate club, you know, we're going to go back and switch sides. So design committee, it's going to be all about opinion for somebody. So we could flip that around 100 different ways. Number two question I have for staff actually was, do we have any idea when the food carts are actually going to open?
You're talking about the food cart pod?
Yep.
There have been some permitting challenges because of just kit building not being quite right for our localized environment, so that we're working through those. Um, they've obviously moved a lot of dirt, but it is a kit building, so once it's approved by all parties, and once the other trades associated with it are approved, it can go up real quick, but I don't know when it'll be approved.
Okay.
Once that is approved, it's probably a three-month process. I, ideally, I'd like to believe it's the end of the year, but I'm not sure at this point.
Just, it's a talk around.
It's not, it's not for the lack of.
Everybody's just kind of wondered.
No, it's, it's, and if you've all have been to the Happy Valley one, you know how popular a place it's, it is and how it can be here. So we're all very eager.
Good. And then, uh, I just wanted to give a shout out. Thank you to Commissioner Wilcox for being so detailed with the minutes all the time. I know that's not an easy thing to do, but knowing you're going to do it sure takes a load off of my plate as well, so I can concentrate on the new things coming up. So thank you, Commissioner Wilcox.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, one quick note on the minutes.
Yes.
Uh, one thing to make note of is our transcriptionist, Melissa Siloto, who some of you have met before, informed us that because she's got changing obligations with her primary job, is going full-time, won't be available much longer. Um, so we will be looking for transcription services and we'll keep you posted. Her next, her last meeting will be the final meeting, so we'll at least give her some fireworks to go out with. But, uh, for the record, we wanted to thank Melissa for several years of service with us.
Great job.
And thank you, Commissioner Wilcox, also.
Yes. Thank you both. Okay, with that. Motion adjourned?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn this evening's planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Great. You all, we will see you on the 13th.
Good night. Thank you. Good night.